Yeah, everybody's voting. Here. You want to pull a chair up here, Don? Yeah, come around here, pull a chair or something.
I'll wait for everybody to sit down.
Huh? Okay. Are you talking about me? Are you talking about me? Welcome to the Select Board and Planning Board meeting for January 21st. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Don, you want to take over?
Sure. Tonight, we are going to have a motion to approve the application of Josh Levine to become a member of the Planning Board. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to, I guess, appoint Joshua Levine to fill the vacancy on the Planning Board that was caused by the resignation of Heather LaPorte.
I'd second that motion.
Okay, any discussion? I think Joshua will be an excellent, an excellent member of the board and look forward to him being on it. Shall we take a vote?
Yeah.
All in favor? Thank you.
I'm abstention. I wasn't here for the interviews.
So at this point, can I have a motion to adjourn the joint session of the Planning Board and the Select Board?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the joint meeting.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor? Thanks very much.
Thank you. We're adjourning, anyone who has, yes, anyone who has Planning Board matters, we are adjourning to room A-12.
And please go see town clerk tomorrow sometime.
Yes, you need to be sworn in.
Okay, welcome.
You're welcome to come to our meeting now if you'd like.
Lynn, do you have any announcements?
I do. Okay, the 2020 recycling and yard waste stickers are available for purchase now. You can purchase them online or in person at the town clerk's office. Stickers are, for 65 years and older, they're $36. An additional sticker is $16. Under 65, the stickers are $46. And there's a bunch of information posted on the town website about just fees in general for the recycling and yard waste facility. Chief Dearborn prepared an ice safety notice to just help alert the community to the dangers of venturing out on the ice. A copy had been posted, it's available here. And you can access that on the website as well, just to take caution if you're considering going out on the ice. It's generally not a safe thing to do. And Census 2020 kickoff, there's an event at Stores Library on January 30th at 6 o'clock. And there are quite a few job opportunities available if anyone is interested in working for Census 2020. That information's also available on the town website.
Anyone else have announcements on the Select Board?
Actually, I, yeah, no, not announced, no.
Oh, you want, okay.
It's a comment.
Hold it. And how about resident comments? Any resident comments? No? Okay, how about Select Board comments, huh?
Yes, well, I stopped by the town hall today and I got this, I'm gonna open this up. And this is sent from the Office of the Registry of Deeds. And, you know, I opened it up and right in the crease here is town of Long Meadow. And I just was disappointed with what I read. Now Marie Angelis, you know, you volunteered on this Select Board, how many years?
Nine. I'm closing my nine.
Closing your ninth year, eight and a half years. And when they published the Select Board, they had the names of Mark Gold, myself, William Low, and Richard Foster, and they left your name on it.
Okay.
And I just, I just, I'm calling Martha Cocoli out on this.
Well, thank you, that's very kind of you.
Cheryl Recopli.
I doubt they'll reprint.
I just think that it's so unfair that she left your name on it because you ran against her.
And that can't be.
I guess it's just a, for those listening, there are some things that can happen when you run for office. But, you know, a person who's dedicated eight and a half years to the town in a nonpartisan office, your name should be on there and it bothers me.
No, thank you, I appreciate that. Well, when did it get published? Should Margaret been in there too? Who did you get angry?
It says 2019, I don't know the date, but.
Well, William Low was still in there?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it must have been pre-election.
What year is it?
This just, it just came out.
I'm kidding.
Mark was the chair last year.
They used data from last.
So, yeah, they can't do it quickly.
Absolutely.
That's right. We'll put a little notice next door. Any other announcements, I mean, Select Board comments? I have one. I heard about there's a veterans group that they're forming, a special veterans group. And one of the veterans there told me about a really great program that maybe when I get off the board and I have more time, I might do, and I thought maybe other people might be interested. It's called Veterans Treatment Court of Western Massachusetts. And there are a few that have occurred around the country, and we have one here. When there is a veteran who's gotten in trouble and they're being sent to court, there is a special veterans court. And with that veterans court are assistants. And you can join and you can volunteer and you can be sort of like a support or a mentor to a veteran who's trying to work their way through the system. And they have, usually they're veterans, but they're really short, they're looking for women. And even though you're not a veteran, there is one woman I understood who's done a lot of work there and they've made her an honorary veteran because of the work she's done. But if anyone's interested, it's Holyoke District Court and it's called the Veterans Treatment Court. And you can get more information from Lena, she has these brochures there. And my understanding from the Long Meadow residents who are participating in this program, it's really, really worthwhile too. And it's just a wonderful program and they enjoy spending their time down with the veterans. And it's not that much of a commitment either. So please, anyone's interested, check with Lena, our vets agent.
Yeah, that's about four years ago they started that. Because a lot of veterans end up in jail that, you know, are really dealing with issues of PTSD and so forth. So it's a great program.
Well, maybe you'll volunteer too.
I should, yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, I have one, a public service announcement. I had, I had heard rumors, I put a solar system on my home and I'd heard rumors from a lot of people that Eversource could take up to, up to eight months is what I heard, to put the meters on after the system was operational and ready to have the meters put on. So I dropped, I went to the building department, I downloaded the database for everybody who has a solar system in Long Meadow. And I went out the other day and started at the most recent system that was heading backwards. What I found is, contrary to what I had heard, it appears to be after the final inspection by our electrical department and notification from your solar company to Eversource, it only takes about two to three weeks for the entire process. I had three, four people, that that was the time period that it took. So I stopped, I stopped wasting people's time and going backwards because I didn't figure it was going to change. But the only thing I can figure is that if you're getting a system put on, you're being told this, I'd be cautious that your solar firm itself is submitting the paperwork in a timely fashion. In my case, I know they held the paperwork for a month in their office just internally before they submitted it to Eversource. And then when they did it, they submitted it inappropriately because Eversource does have about 15 different requirements. There's a lot of steps to getting an interconnect to the electrical system from your solar system. But anyway, if anybody out there is having trouble, I wish you'd get in touch with the Select Board. I did hear some negative comments when I was out talking to a couple of customers that were very upset with their solar providers, so. And we're unaware that this may be going on in our town. So if you hear of anybody or if you're having problems, get in touch with Select Board and we'll see if we can speed up the answers to you or at least coach through and get a proper resolution on your complaint. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, why don't we move on to the senior housing task force interviews? And we'll bring a couple of people up at a time. Eleanor Press and Jerry Nolett, would you come up here? Thank you, would you state your name, your address, and why you're interested in becoming a member of the task force?
My name is Eleanor Press and I live at 114 Emerson Road. That's the senior housing known as Emerson Manor. I've been involved with that housing since 1975 approximately. We're approaching our 40 years now of being built and rented out. We started with 78 units, there are now 99 units, over 100 people living there. And I thought that my experience in senior housing would be something I can bring to the town. I'm now considering some other alternatives.
Thank you.
Very nice. And I'm Jerry Nolett, 724 Frank Smith Road. And I feel a little bit like tonight, like I'm the energy bunny and I never quit. I think historically, Long Meadow has been, has had a lack of senior housing over the years. And I think Long Meadow is well below the state mandated level. And we've always used the, not the excuse, but that we don't have, we don't have any land. Well, the location across from where I live is 20 acres. And it's an ideal location. It's a dry location, it's a level location, and would probably make an ideal location for senior housing. And I have walked it often, Richard, as you probably know. And I think overall that obviously senior housing would provide 55 and older, would provide taxes, badly needed taxes for our community without challenging the school system dramatically. The only, and I would like to join this task force to provide some input, living here in Long Meadow for 50 years. What I do see, though, is a potential somewhat negative, I think, feature is a large $1 million tank sitting right in the middle of this property. So I think we're gonna have to be very innovative and see that it doesn't impact on what we'd like to do. And I'd like to serve at your permission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Richard?
Thank you. The, I did look at the notice, it says senior housing, but it really goes well beyond that. What we're envisioning is a task force that is going to study the entire senior issue, period, from stem to stern, I guess, for the Navy folks. We envision that 30% of our population right now appears to be over 60 in our community, and that's growing by the day. We know the housing is almost nonexistent in our community, or the availability is very difficult for senior housing. But that's only one of the pieces. We feel as a community, we may not be totally aware of what the needs are today and what the needs will be 15 years from now for the senior population. And that goes from transportation, it goes from food programs, it goes from housing, social environment, all of these factors. And we're hoping that this task force, we envision a task force that's likely going to be active for a year. It's not going to be a quick task force. They're going to be with a host of issues on the table. They will be the sounding board, hopefully, for this community going for the next 15, 20, 30 years for senior issues. It was a very important task force. And we also have four, I think we've recommended four people from staff from the community, or from the town to be on this task force. So that brings a couple of questions up. Number one, would you feel obligated to possibly be involved with a task force that's going to last for a year, it's going to have a lot of meetings? Second part, this task force will likely, I'm not talking as a chair of the task force, but there's a good possibility this task force may be meeting during the day because of the town personnel that the town manager will have involved with it. Is there any opposition that you can sense from either of those elements? And the third, third, I cheated, I got a third one. We have more than, we're only putting four people on from the town. But we have, I think, what, seven or eight or nine people that are put in? And I guess I have to ask, although this has not been thrown on the table yet, if you're not put on the task force, would you be willing to be assigned as an alternate in case we get attrition?
If you'd like to respond to that?
I'm happy to serve the broader area than just housing and the time commitment.
And also the open meeting law committee, this would be a direct extension of the task force. There'll be minutes and stuff, there'll be administrative requirements. It'll be like a mini-board like we are. Jerry, I know you're very familiar with, because you, as you said, you've been in every committee in town.
Two of my grandsons who are from North Carolina say, "Grandpa, you're retarded." So I have the time to put into the system. And as a matter of fact, I spent over an hour today, I'm a member of Faloka, Vice President of Faloka, and very active with the, obviously with the building, the new adult center building on, in Long Meadow. As a matter of fact, both Roger Wojcik and I wrote the first article that went to town meeting. I am fully aware that it's a task that probably is a bottomless pit to certain extent. But I think, I think I would like to give it a shot.
Thank you very much. We'll be voting our next meeting, which will be, I think, February 3rd. We have some more to do on February 3rd too. Thank you. All right, the next two is Steiner and Pullman.
Carol's not here.
Carol's not here. Pullman and Leslie. Thank you, state your name, your address, and why you want to be on the task force.
I'm David Leslie, I live at 64 Coventry Lane here in town. And I've lived here for about 21 years now. I've worked in senior living here in town for 23. I work at Glen Meadow. And through time, I've seen some of the things that have been being faced by the older adults in our community. And I'm glad you mentioned this, more than just housing, because there's a lot more issues to it than just housing. The vast majority of seniors don't want to have to move. They want to be able to stay in their home. And what kind of supports do they need to be able to do that? And what can the town do and what can the different constituencies in the town do to help support people where they are? We're just going to get older and longevity is going to keep going.
Thank you.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
Mark Pullman, the 561 Frank Smith Road. I'm interested in this because I've had a lot of experiences, various experiences living here in Long Meadow. The first over on Brooks Road, as it was being developed, it was unpaved. Frank Smith was unpaved. After I retired in 2002, we moved to a condominium because we wanted to be away a lot in the summertime, a vacation home up in the Adirondacks. So I tried Converse condominiums for 16 years, found advantages and disadvantages. And about three years ago, we moved back to a house over on Frank Smith because we found that we missed having things on one level. We especially missed having attached garage to the unit. And so those are things that I wanted to make sure that were considered in the new housing. My main interest, though, is in making sure that everybody considers the option of a cohousing, as is up in Northampton, there are certain advantages to cohousing, which I think might, should be considered. You can get one or two units per building. You can get more people compact, you can have a common area. You can share some responsibilities. Having, in Northampton, I understand, they have a common house where they have extra bedrooms for family members coming. They have some place for socializing in the common area. And those are things I want to make sure are considered in any housing projects here. My other concern is that the, any new housing take advantage of the environmental concerns. And I would hope that they, you can find a way to do this without adding more gas lines to the buildings. Look into researching all of those alternatives, so. Those are my interests.
Mark?
Mr. Pullman, just based on your comments, I think that the committee also ought to consider accessory housing, you know, generally commonly known as in-law apartments, that kind of thing that currently our bylaws restrict. And potentially easing that may be another option that this committee might want to look at. And when I looked at it, I thought that part of the committee's charge ought to be going through the bylaws and saying which ones are friendly to seniors and need to be enhanced and which ones aren't friendly and may need some recommended changes. But the accessory housing issue is something that you may want to look at also.
And it's three questions that I had. Anybody have any problems with what I said?
I did not.
I have a question, can we attend meetings electronically?
That really would be up to the chair when they form the committee. And we have not, we've not set up remote participation, but that hasn't been brought to our board for this committee.
But we allow it for a committee. So if the committee accepts remote participation, the state has set, you know, guidelines for that, that everybody has to have the right same information, they have to be, you know, able to hear what's going, all that kind of stuff. But the committee can approve remote participation if they choose to.
I mean, for me, it would be an important feature to be able to have that opportunity, so.
Up to the group.
Okay, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Bruzlin and Cobb. Can I please state your name, your address, and why you want to be on the task force?
My name is Russ Cobb. I'm quite familiar with town of Long Meadow. My current residence is 24 Tabor Crossing, just off of Converse here. I've lived in town for 45 years. I left my profession in Europe to come to Long Meadow and teach at the high school. When I drove in here earlier this evening, I realized that if I looked over at that space over there, that's where my office was. But it was a blank space. It's a parking lot now. But I became the Department Chair of English and I taught the high school for 25 years. I chose an early retirement simply because I had other interests. I wanted to volunteer for the town, which I did, at the Stores Library. I guess one of my strongest suits is communication and the ability to communicate with other people. And I think sometimes seniors are in a situation that they need a very kind ear but also a firm, sometimes a firm voice. And I think that my experience is working with young people and older people. And now I'm working very indirectly with some of my former students who now have their children in high school. And so I have a very casual connection still with the town. And I wasn't satisfied with just retiring, which was a wonderful opportunity for me. But within a year, I was invited by a corporation that was starting up in Hadley, Massachusetts. And I became an Assistant Chief Reader for the National Evaluation Systems, which is now part of Pearson International Evaluation Systems. I was 60 when I retired from the high school. And I was 80 when I retired from Pearson Evaluation. So work is not an unfriendly opportunity for me and communication. Because I had to work one-on-one, groups, I had to train people. And I think that for me as a senior, and I've been a senior for quite a while, is that I've lived with family members and relatives and neighbors, even in town, who have gone through a transition and I really didn't understand what the fuss was all about. Now I know what the fuss can be about, and that's important to me. I'm looking not only at those who are around me in my age group, so to speak, but I'm also looking at those students that I taught, who are in their 50s and approaching their 60s now. So I think I have longevity on my side. My mother just recently passed away at 102. So, and most of the family does pass at a very late time in life. But it's exciting. In fact, I feel excited as I'm sitting here listening to you people talk. And these people, during their interviews, I don't have a lot of knowledge about plots of land and vacancies and all the ins and outs of, as they say in England, granny housing or mother-in-law apartments, that type of thing. But I'm a very quick learner. And I think I can communicate whatever I'm asked, you know, to impart to others around me. And that's just me, that's just who I am, pretty open. And I, I can remember my dedication when I flew from Germany into Hartford with a six-month-old daughter for my interview here at the high school. And I was so excited and I knew this is where I wanted to be. And folks, I'm still here and I intend to be here for a while.
And thank you for stepping forward and volunteering.
Just let me know, all right? And as to the questions, Mr. Foster, I'm fine with whatever transpires. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
No. Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Oh, Richard? Well, I was going to.
It's the same three general questions.
Richard Bruzlin, 77 Blueberry Hill Road. I've been in Long Meadow for 47 years. And I was fortunate enough to serve five terms on the school committee for 15 years, chairman five times. So I bring a certain amount of experience with dealing with committees and boards and dealing with issues, and some issues are more delicate than others. And I really hadn't given a lot of thought about some of the things that actually you raised, aside from housing, because I know a lot of my friends have moved out of town to Suffield, to Summers, to Eastlaw Meadow because of the housing situation. So I, I would like to expand upon those ideas that you raised with regard to other things other than housing. I know I live on Blueberry Hill Road and in the 42 years I've lived in that neighborhood, the neighborhood has changed at least two or three times. And currently, we're now in that mode where we have tons of kids that are now filling Blueberry Hill. Blueberry Hill School and the middle schools. And so I've seen that evolution of my friends when we moved in in 1977 into that neighborhood, where all our kids have grown, and now they're, you know, families of their own. And some of my friends' children have had children. But looking for us seniors, it's more than the housing. Yes. I didn't realize all the things that you were talking about, you know? And I'm certainly well willing to explore those and anxious to explore those, those type of things. So to answer your question, I'm still working full-time as a sole practitioner, attorney in real estate. But because I'm a sole practitioner, my time is my time, I'm more than willing to take time from that to meet if necessary during the day or whatever, because I can arrange my schedule as such. So I would look forward to working with the town again after all these years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I can remember you. Probably your children should have.
Yeah, right. I think one of the most timely things that I've experienced was, you know, when you retire and you settle, and my wife and I moved from a colonial to a ranch in town to live out the rest of our lives. But sometimes things happen that knock you right off your feet. That happened to me just recently. So I really have a lot of empathy in trying to grasp, what do I do next? And I think that's part of my impetus for, for seeking your approval.
Thank you very much for coming forward. And thank you, everyone. As I said, I guess we have a couple more people we're going to be doing beginning of February, so it's going to be more like mid-February before we'll have, be able to vote. Okay? Thank you very much for coming in. All right, moving on to, let's see, Town Manager's Report. Now, are, are they, are they putting the camera on your screen so that you can see? Because you can at least tell people in case they can't. What you've done is wonderful.
I don't know. This will be the first time. I don't know. I don't know.
Well, there's a camera up there that could do it.
Yeah, maybe it's that one.
They're listening to us, you know.
We could do it.
You could do it, okay.
I was going to say, behind the scenes, there's people.
So wow, isn't it?
So, let's see. The annual town census has been mailed to all residents in the town of Long Meadow. That was sent out Friday the 10th, so you should have received that in your mail. If not, contact the town clerk. If you did receive it, we would really appreciate you to complete those town censuses and mail them back or drop them off in person. If you have changes, you can make those on the form. Or if you have any questions, you can certainly reach out to the town clerk. And failure to respond to the annual census would cause you, as a registered voter, to be added to the inactive list. You could still vote on election day, but you would need to show an ID and complete an affirmation of current continuous residency before being allowed to vote. And if you have a dog, you can conveniently renew your dog license on the back of your census forms. Dog license renewals are due by April 1st. So again, it's really important to get those forms in. It helps to make sure that the voting rolls are accurate as well. So the GIA, we have, this is good news to announce. The town of Long Meadow received the Government Finance Officers Association Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for the FY 2020 budget. It's commonly referred to as the GFPA. This is the fifth consecutive year that the town has received this prestigious award. There's certain benchmarks that have to be hit in order to get this award, which includes using the budget as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and as a communications device. So I cannot take any credit for this because this is completed well before I got here. So certainly, congratulations to Paul and for all his hard work and the finance team and the select board as well on doing that. It's, not every community gets that, so good job. So, little bit of bad news. The MVP grant that I informed you about back in November that we submitted for did not get approved. They had an overwhelming amount of applications. We had submitted for the tree inventory, the watershed evaluation, and a complete stormwater infrastructure mapping and condition assessment. So that unfortunately was not approved, but they were very encouraging for us to reapply in the spring round. So I, we'll be back to you with an update on that in the next few months when we decide what we would like to submit for. But we will certainly be submitting something in the spring round. Community health assessment. So earlier this fall, the towns of East Long Meadow and Long Meadow Boards of Health applied and received a grant to fund a community health assessment for each community. This will be done by Health Resources in Action. They, it's a public survey component of this as well. But what they do is they really take and gather data and assess the community health of each town. Each town will be done separately, but then they will also prepare a report that compares and contrasts each town as we continue a conversation about possible shared health services. This is going to be vital information. So there'll be a big public component of this probably in March or so. So we'll certainly want to put the word out there about that. And the final report on the Special Commission for Crumbling Foundations was issued December 31st. A copy of this has been posted to the town's website on the Select Board Town Manager page, if anyone does want to see it. And you can be sure that there'll be more information about this. I will be trying to sit down with some of the neighboring communities to see if we can kind of tackle this together, or at least look at this together to figure out if there's areas that we could come together on to try to work out some solutions or certainly be a louder, louder voice at the state level to try to get some help.
Any questions?
Well, just a couple of things. One is, I think twice in the last few months, I've asked for more information about the school committee, the school board, and all that stuff. And so, thank you for getting back to me on that, connecting me with the monthly report. Hopefully, you all received that. That the superintendent moves in, and then a link to the website. I really appreciate the response, and I think that's, it's going to be helpful. The other thing is, I saw that the police department is nearing their 100th anniversary from 1920 to 2020. And I, I think that would really be something that we should, the select board should probably help out, you know, in terms of maybe some planning for that. That's a pretty nice, you know, 100-year anniversary is a big deal. I can only imagine what the police officers looked like 100 years ago in this town, you know? And, but the other thing is that, you know, they talked about the, you know, the, you know, the regional emergency communication center that's now in Chickapi that we're working with. And we went to the opening, and we saw it there. It was great to see the setup. And one of the things I saw was a screen with all the cameras in the town of Chickapi that the police were reviewing. People always saw that. And I was curious, do we have any similar cameras set up in our town? I don't know if you would know that question.
Yes, there are some.
Yeah.
I know there are plans to add more, but there are some currently, yes.
And so this center would keep an eye on those?
They have access to that now, yes.
They have access to that now. Okay. Well, that's good to know. All right. That's all I had. Thank you.
Mark?
I want to add something to Lynn's report because she, I don't want to be modest or whatever. But, and I also, I want to bring, although the select board hears this in her weekly notes she sends out to people at home. We have just an update on our streetlight program. So as everybody knows, in November, we bought the streetlights. And my understanding is we got a bill in December, and the bill in December reflected the fact that, I think it was a half a month, but it reflected the fact that we own the streetlights, and it's showing the savings that we projected, and it's really helping out a lot. I think the number is something like $20,000 a month or something like that on a monthly basis.
I haven't looked, Mark.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't yet.
It's supposed to be in that, in that, in that order. So that's moving along well. But the other thing I wanted to point out was that we have placed a purchase order for LED lights for the, what's called the standard lights, the Cobra head lights. That purchase order was placed long ago. Chad Thompson, who's our purchasing agent, has been doing just a great job getting this stuff done. That's going to qualify for state reimbursement grants because of the timing and when it's done. We're finalizing the purchase order for our decorative lights, which is in fact in Long Meadow. The bulk of them, and a lot of that is the result of work that Lynn did with Chad and others, making sure that we got detailed specifications. And I'm just going to share this with the select board members here. We, we also just awarded a contract for the installation of our streetlights. It's, it's going to a company called Arden Engineering. I had never heard of them. It turns out, I guess Mark Agawang used them as well. They bid on a statewide basis or regional basis. And I know Lynn reported that to us last week, that they got the contract. But part of the, if you will, the background check on them is each town, people in each town were asked to call and do credit, reference checks on, on Arden Engineering. So I got to call a couple of communities. And it was interesting. One of the communities I called, they, they talked about the issues they had had with decorative lights and decorative light changes. They didn't have the benefits that we had of Tanco Lighting literally drilling down to the, you know, what are the dimensions inside the light to make sure the retrofit kit will fit in there? And they, they said, gee, I hope you're, you're doing, and it was, it felt great knowing that we've had a really great relationship with the, with the firm that's our consultant doing this, really specifying this down to the littlest detail. And we're really ready to move on, on those as well. We've got them all specified out. I mean, to the point where they were looking at, please check this, these three lights or five lights or whatever they is, because we're not sure about them. We had to go out and literally remeasure three lights in, in the town out of 1,400. So I, I think the select board and certainly the people at home should feel comfortable that so far, this project is on time, delivering as, as promised, and looks to be doing really, really well. And a lot of that thanks is due to Lynn having jumped in, Chad Thompson having jumped in, and certainly our consultant, which is Tanco Lighting, and the, and folks there who are very dogged in their pursuit of us making sure we do, I mean, they call us, they make sure we do things, they send nasty emails. I mean, to the point where they've gone out to, to Eversource and sent them, okay, here's what Long Meadow's lighting bill is going to look like come April, or May 1st, after the LEDs are installed. They've calculated light by light, the wattage change. And they've already sent that to Eversource. And when they didn't get a response in the first week, they sent it again until Eversource came back to them. So it's, it's been a great project. And I think people in town should be very proud of the work that being done on behalf of the town on that.
Well, Mark, you've been talking about this since I got on the board and before. So my question is, what's your next project going to be, when this is finally done?
There's a couple of next projects, Marie.
You've got some things ready to go?
You know, if I, if I can just take a minute, I, I think that the issue for us is that there's a, there's a significant savings to the town on this on an annual basis. And I think, you know, although it's not going to solve all of our budgeting problems, it's going to go a long way toward helping make the 2021 budget. If you've got, give or take, $300,000 or $250,000 or $300,000 less, you've got to pay for streetlights. And my hope is that we can identify and come up with a new one of these that rolls in every year that has, if not the same order, magnitude, something like that. So it both benefits the people in town, but also gives us a boost in our budget. Because this is, beside being the right thing to do, it's, it's a significant assist to our finances.
And thank you for your perseverance and hard work. At least 10 years.
I'll tell you, it's, working with, working with Tanco has been great, and Lynn and Chad.
Well, you'll have to stop at their booth.
Yeah, I don't know if they have a booth, but I don't think they even do.
Any other questions? What's nice about your, the way you've set it up, is that anyone who wants to could go to the agenda, and you not only easily click onto the Town Manager's Report, but all of the reports that are given from the various departments. So this is much easier to access. Thank you very much. Do we want to go to approval of minutes? Is there a motion for the January 6 regular meeting?
Yeah. I move that we approve the regular meeting minutes from January 6, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? How about abstention? Okay. And moving on to the special select board and planning meeting, board meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So will.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor? And abstain. Okay, thank you. Now we're moving on to the financial policies. I know one of the things that I understood from our ratings, like Standard &amp; Poor, they all would like us to have these financial policies and then follow them. That little, little second step has always been an issue. So we wanted to review these to make sure they reflect our actual actions so that they support our rating rather than start moving against us. So Paul, what's your recommendation on the OPEB?
Just on the OPEB, originally written back in September 2012, there were a number of updates, 2014, 2018. But during the budget presentation, we had talked about amending it further. It was growing at a very rapid rate. It was kind of eating into the operating portion of the rest of the budget. The commitment at that point in time was to fund it at a level of $500,000 for FY 21. I've also added a, an increase annually, and I didn't know how the board felt about that increase annually. I did put it in there more or less for, for discussion purposes. And we can also add the words, if affordable, to that, if so desired. It's not on there right now. And again, it all comes from the discussion, the original discussion back, I think in October, regarding the FY 21 budget projections, so.
So the, man, I just, I just want to clarify. So the, where you've changed the addendum to the actual policy is as of July 1st, 2020?
That, that, that part was added.
And was there anything else added?
Yeah, there was another part added in the middle where we accepted the OPEB trust fund. I also added that.
Okay.
You know, that's, that's, that's history. That's, that's really not debatable. Whether it's added or not is, I don't know if it's real material, but it is the reality of what happened, that the statute was amended. We had to re-accept the statute. We did re-accept the statute on May 9th of 2017, so I just added that. The real crux of the matter is as of July 1st, 2020, the town's contribution. That's really what we really want to vote upon and discuss.
And is the last line in addition also, once the OPEB trust fund reaches?
No, no, that is not new.
That was in the original. Okay. So it's just that one section, if everyone can see, July 1st, 2020. The town's contribution to OPEB trust fund will be $500,000, will increase by 2.5 annually thereafter. Mark?
I guess I'm concerned that we're setting ourselves up for violating a brand-new updated policy. And if we approve this now, not yet knowing what the budget brings. I mean, we haven't finalized the 2021 budget. And I'm just thinking, shouldn't we finalize the 2021 budget and then make sure that this is, complies with that budget? Because we can write this now and then find out that, you know, things come up and OPEB is, is available, you know? I mean, if you end up at 2.4% instead of 2.5 or 2.3, it looks kind of lousy that you just wrote the policy in, in Fe, in January, and here comes April, and you're already, you know, countering your policy.
Well, it wouldn't count the 2.5. But the question is, can we afford $500,000 this year?
It, it's yet to be seen. There's still a couple of things that are outstanding. Certainly, the governor's budget is a big number that has to come in. We've estimated a 4% increase. My fingers are crossed. The Scantic Valley Health Insurance number, there was an estimate there.
Oh, what was the estimate?
The estimate was seven and a half percent. So again, those determining, those are all going to be part of this, whether we can afford this or not. The other number is the school budget. And speaking with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent of finance, we have an idea of where it's roughly. But the final mark isn't necessarily known. So there's a couple of moving targets that we have. And also with regard to that market, this current fiscal year, the amount was $618,000 that we put in. So this withdraws already some of it. And it would be, if we don't hit the target, it would be closer, actually, than not putting it in. Because, again, we would be going up to maybe $670,000, somewhere in that vicinity.
I mean...
So we're violating it, he says.
I guess the question is, is the, is the benefits of locking in a revision to our
policy in February greater than the benefits of, it's a guideline, use it as a guideline or a policy, see what it does with our budget, and then use that and say, okay, now we have a couple of years of what we've been doing now, let's adjust the policy later? I mean, if we were going to out for, for raising funds, for capital, you know, and we needed updated policies, I could see doing that. But between now and April, nobody's looking at this but us, probably. So that's my only point of saying, you know, why are we in a rush to modify this when we might have to make a change in two months?
Right. We will be going out, or it's my intent to go out to bond in the spring. We are looking at refinancing the second bone on the high school, but we also have the bond for Phase 2 of the landfill closure. I think Morningside is another project, Morningside Culver. And the, we need the bond, I think there's one other project, I don't remember what it is off the top of my head, but there's one other project out there that we also need to bond. So we probably will go out in the spring. It's, you know, it's, it doesn't hurt, like I said, though, you're going to be violating it potentially one way or another.
So we're violating if we don't change it?
Right, and you're more out to hit this target than you are the former target.
But if we, but if we change it and don't hit this target, then we really look foolish, in my opinion.
Before, Richard, I just want to add something that Tom and Mark, he weren't here for, but Paul did report that pensions going up 10%. There was a target of eight and a half percent per year.
Changed it to 10?
And we're now at 10 this year.
No, we, we got assessed it, where historically we've been below that eight. And, and the eight percent maximum is their bottom line, that it can go up. But we are, our percentage share grew a little bit higher than the, would have been in the past. So the combination of the bottom line going up eight percent, and our percentage share of the whole being a little bit greater, the actual increase in our assessment went up 10%.
But I, you said you would go back and check that, because the former town manager was not, his salary was not counted towards that end of September hit, so which makes me wonder why there was that blip up.
What I did look at, what I did look at, it's, I didn't see anything. I mean, they're all there. The numbers were taken off the payroll the 30th of September, as the instructions say, and multiplied by, you know, 26.2, because it's a bi-weekly amount. So again, I didn't see anything that we can really argue with the assessment at this point in time.
And that's like, how much was that an increase from what you were expecting?
Oh, it was, it was about $100,000, I think it was $100,000 more, but because in previous years, we've had a little excess, the actual increase was maybe about $40,000 more than I had actually budgeted for.
Oh, okay.
So it wasn't as bad as the $100,000. But historically, and going back over the last five years, we've always have been under, and we've always, it's always been used to offset the projected deficit we had at the time. Unfortunately, this year, it went the opposite way for the first time in a number of years.
Okay. I just want everyone to have that information.
Thank you.
Richard?
The OPEB is not discretionary.
Correct.
It's something that is real. It's, you know, we talk like discretionary here, it always irritates me when this board gets into these hypothetical, well, I'm not sure we can afford this this year, maybe we'll put it on for another 10 years. It's not discretionary, it's building. No, I've got, don't, you're wanting to jump, just sit there, put the straps on. Yet last year it was $618,000. Now we're proud of ourselves to come out with a policy, taking it back to $500,000. Let's get real. We're either going to support this thing as a board, or why don't we just throw it out and forget about it? Because this Nancy Panzi approach we have every year, to going up and down, and somehow trying to satisfy ourselves, is kind of silly, because we're not being honest about this thing. This gentleman comes in every year, and our audits come in every year and tell us what this liability is. It is growing, it's astronomically growing. The Tooth Fairy is not going to bail us out on it, we know that. We're not going to pay for it, I'm not going to pay for it. I'll be off the board before the pendulum swings. Paul, you'll be retired. Town manager will likely be retired. But there is a group of people that are going to be really caught behind the eight ball when this thing really starts coming due. I don't know why we don't talk about, every new program that comes in should be automatically debited for a contribution into OPEB, everything. Anything that's approved by this board, there should be an automatic factor put into that, said, this percentage of this is going into the OPEB. And we change the discussion. I realize it's a lot of money, but it's never going to get paid off unless we get serious about it, and keep serious. And it's just like our payment, the first thing this board wants to do is grab money out of the asphalt program, to pay off some other thing they dreamed up. The asphalt is deteriorating faster than our money is, and it is going to deteriorate. Is it going to be while we're on the board? No, Marie, you're going to retire next year, and I'm not picking, picking you out for a person. But it's the same as OPEB, it's growing every year that we deny the fact that it's there. And, and I would love to see the board have serious discussions on how do we fund these, instead of how we play with policies around funding them. Acknowledge the fact that these are, these are major considerations for the future of our community. Now, if we're just serving here for three to five years and going home, that's fine, we can do that, we can continue, let the next group kick the can down the road. But this can's getting bigger. How many million is it now, Paul?
I think you're around 30 million, I believe.
30 million, okay. Your projections are coming pretty close on the, on the debt, or on our, extension of our tax base, and we're still, we're at, what, 24, 19, or 20?
Twenty-four, maybe 25, after this last year.
Okay, so we got a little bit of relief there, so that's coming too. This also is out there, folks, it's out there. Not only this, we've got, how much, how much is our deficit on our pension system?
Far greater than 30.
Okay. Are you folks hearing what we're saying? You know, we're, we're up here, we've got, we've got, we just threw $60 million worth of, at least $60 million worth of debt on the table, and we're talking about resetting the totals and starting over again. And it's making us feel good. I don't, I don't get a good feeling for this. I can't solve it. But why we sit here and, and don't get serious about at least making a solid contribution and sticking with it, and right, I'd like to see this thing as a bylaw, because as long as it's a policy, board after board after board is going to tear it apart, drop it back to some minimum thing, and start over like they had a pride of accomplishment in that action. And that's not, it's going backwards. 618 last year, and we cut the policy before too, didn't we, Paul?
We had taken out the excludable debt portion of it. Because again, the excludable debt is earmarked for debt, and it created nothing for the operating budget, which this is coming from.
And right now, it's coming right off the top of the budget. We're not making any special allocation reimbursements from, from our enterprise funds or any of that stuff.
No, they actually get assessed, the enterprise funds get assessed, the ambulance fund gets assessed, and the, and the daycare program gets assessed, when we do, basically do them at the end of the fiscal year. So they do get an assessment. There's a program here at the schools that gets an assessment, because it's a reimbursable grant that we pay for out of an individual. So there are assessments being distributed throughout, I don't want to say those pockets of money, but those revenue-based funds that we utilize.
Well, you know, the meals tax, we threw a meals tax on our community. What's it, what's it generating?
$130,000.
$130,000. We didn't earmark that money.
Nope.
I mean, we might well just thrown in a, in a grab-bag trashcan, because that's what happened to that money. That was $130,000 worth of new revenue that I said now, to my dying day, should have been, if it was approved, it should have been allocated for something that we had recognized the need for, that tax being placed on our community. Mark's talking about the savings from this, from, from the streetlights. Where's that money going to go? It's going to go into the big trash bucket again, we're going to be reaching in and grabbing and joyfully running down the street and spending it. Instead of taking those savings, and Mark, congratulate Mark for bringing the program in, but that's only part of it. What do we do with the savings? He keeps saying we got saving, saving, savings, and it's true. What are we going to do with it? Then it makes it real. Up until that point, it's just, the hats are moving on the table, nothing's really moving forward. Except, we, we got the lights, great. But what do we do with the money that we save? I thought that's what it was all about. If it's going to budget, if it's going to the budget, then let's announce it, and let's get it out in the open. If it's going to this, let's do that.
It, it will end up in the general fund budget.
It'll general fund, right.
There are, there are requests that are greater than three and four percent, you know, some of them are legitimate, you're redoing Wolf Swamp Fields, you have a new Council on Aging building that's going to need new janitorial services. Those are the types of things that are going to be having some, some extra money thrown thrown at them.
Madam Chairperson, I've been watching too many impeachment hearings, so I'll yield the floor.
Well, I wanted to say, I think that, since you and I have been on the board, it's been about nine years, and I think this board has done a lot in regards for the OPEB. We are the ones that first established a policy. We've set aside, how much money is there now in the, is it three and a half?
It's, it's, it's closer to three, but certainly December and January are very good months in the stock market, which some of this is, is invested by the Pritt Group. So, you know, you might see a decent return, but it's, say, 3 million.
3 million. And then we established the OPEB Trust Fund, and then we, we're now starting to invest the money. We've also said, there's multi ways of handling the OPEB. One is decreasing some of the benefited positions that will be requiring these OPEB to be put away. We, with the regionalization, we've decreased some substantial...
Four or five.
Four or five people, yeah. And I think the school committee and this board has really worked on trying to keep down FTEs going forward. There's multi ways that we do have to approach it. Now, as you said, we've already started to allot for some of the funding, but there's more that can be done, and I agree with that. I don't think it should all be cash that's pulled out of our tax base. I think we have to have a multi-line approach, and one of the ideas that you, you were just bringing up now, on us looking forward on what future costs are and setting aside that money. And I understood the next step is also the unions are going to start, that's going to be part of the negotiations on the union tables, because they're the ones who really want that money there in the future. So I think it, we're waking up as a town to this issue, and we've made some progress. I don't think we have to say this is the only way we're going to approach it. We, as a board, we're becoming much stronger advocates when it comes to Beacon Hill. We should look at legislation. As Mark's always said, solutions got to come not just from our operating budget, but also from the state. The state's created when people have to retire, when we have to start to pay in, what percentage we pay in. And I think, big, if we really make a big effort this year on our OPEB, let's look and see what we can do in advocating some changes at Beacon Hill. But I don't think, I think we have to be realistic on what we can set aside, and up till now, we've sort of been pushing the ball up the hill by having a strong policy. But I think we have to have a policy that we can meet, because every time we don't meet it, or we play around with it, we, I understand, they don't like that, right?
Well, again, any, anytime you're going to go against a financial policy that, you know, you have it in writing, they're, you know, they're going to look, they're going to look twice at it, and they want to understand why. And if they become useless policies, you know, this is going to be, start looking very negative.
Mark?
Yeah, I just think that we need to step back and take a look at what it is we're doing. You know, finances are a balance, and they're, and they're always going to be. I mean, we know that between pensions and OPEB, we could shut down the current operations of the town, continue to raise taxes only for our retirees. And we know we're not going to do that. I mean, we've got to continue to provide services. And so I think that, you know, yes, we're going to fund OPEB, but to say we've not locked in on OPEB and fund OPEB as a number-one priority, means, does that mean we, we step back and fall short of our obligations to the, to our current citizens and providing the services we, we provide them? And clearly, to me, the answer is, no, we ought not do that. And so, you know, I agree with you, Marie, we've done a lot of the right things, you know, I hate to say this, Richard, but I do believe the Tooth Fairy is going to have to help us out here. And by that, I mean it's a federal or state legislation. I mean, you know, and Long Meadows got this massive obligation for medical benefits for retirees, a massive obligation for pension benefits for retirees. And, and we're doing well compared to much of the rest of the Commonwealth, and certainly much of the rest, rest of the country. And so there's got to be some, some substantial changes. And for me to say that, you know, pick a number, and we're going to fund that come, you know, come, come what may, to me is, is putting the, you know, putting our retirees and the past obligations before running the town and doing what's right for our citizens. And very frankly, I'm not sure the people paying the bill are going to be willing to pay for that, if, if they're saying, I'm putting all my money and I'm, I'm not, you cut back on my DPW, you cut back on my life, and that kind of stuff. So I think the balance is a balance, and, and the policy is a policy, but it's, we've got to look at it every year as we go through the budgeting process.
Richard?
I reject the assumption that you're going to be cutting services, because that's, that's kind of a cheap shot to be putting out on this camera, because that's never been discussed, nor will it happen, Mark, you know.
But how do you pay for everything, Richard?
Well, don't, don't rumor mongrel that type of stuff.
But how do you pay for everything?
But let's, let's be hon, let's be honest, some towns have found the wisdom and the way to pay this debt off, and they're clear. Well, I don't know how many there are, Tom, but there's several towns in the Commonwealth.
They've been unbonded for it, maybe we should go out and do a...
I think it's too late, they did a long time ago.
The federal government has nothing whatsoever to do with this issue. This is a state issue. So let's get, don't bring the feds in, it's a state issue. We're not going to cut DPW to fund this thing. But we acknowledge the fact, it is an expenditure, it is growing every single year. And not everybody on this board was even in support of setting up this task force. Marie, you and I worked, and I know this, was kicking and screaming to get this thing set up, because I can go back and watch the tapes, I can remember the discussions. And we had the same discussions for time after time. I think it's helpful just to every once in a while, bring it back out on the table and explore what we're doing as a board. Are we sincere, or are we not sincere? We're not going to tell people we're going to shut down DPW. I mean, we, you just brought in a revenue stream. You just brought in lights, that's going to keep BW running, so we're, we're status zero, we're right there. We just, you know, all that money, we'll just put in DPW, and we're fine, folks. So we'll go on, and now we'll start to pay the debt. But it is not going to go away, Mark.
How about if we wait?
Not going away.
Okay, let's, let's move, can, by our meeting in February, do you think you'll have your stronger budget numbers?
We will certainly have the governor's numbers. I will not have Scantic Valley numbers until I think they meet it in 20-something of February. You know, and the budget as it stands now, when I looked at it, I haven't had detailed discussion with Lynn on it, it's going to be a challenge.
So how about if you report back on February 3rd, and we'll decide where we are?
Yeah, sure.
So we'll put that policy off, so everyone, and maybe Finance Committee or someone else will have an opinion on what we're doing with it. We'll see. So I'll put it off to the next meeting. Let's move on to the sewer enterprise.
The sewer enterprise, there were only two minor areas that were amended. Let me call it up on the screen here. The first is allowed use of funds.
Bless you.
Number two, and I'm not even quite sure what, really what number two, maybe we need to work on the wording, but it says outright purchase of individual capital equipment necessary for the installation, replacement, repair, and maintenance of the sewer collection and supply system up to $25,000. I'm wondering if that should be over $25,000. And $25 is the new capital threshold?
Twenty-five or twenty?
Twenty-five, that's why I changed it.
Okay.
But I think it should be in excess of $25,000.
Okay.
After I further read this.
Anything else we should look to as approved uses of the funds? So we're talking salaries, do we ever do, don't you do a section of salaries? We break down everybody's...
Yeah, I mean, the operations are going to include salaries.
Okay.
It's going to include the, mainly the three categories, or maybe the four categories, you'd have salaries, you have the purchase of, or the sending in the sewer off to the city of Springfield, you have the regular maintenance cost, and then you have the debt service.
And so if we ever wanted to do something like, some sort of, the energy conservation in regards to the pump station, that, that's covered here, under maintenance?
Sure, right, that would be under the operations, or depending on the amount, it could be considered capital.
Okay.
For efficiencies purposes.
For efficiencies purposes.
Do, now, you said, right now, we have a section of this we set aside for OPEB?
When, when I do an allocation, it, during, during the budget process, you'll see that there's a line item for employee benefits, employee and retiree benefits. And I do believe that there's a separate line item for an OPEB allocation, that when I do the actual allocation at year end, based upon who is taking health insurance and so on and so forth, I assess them in an OPEB assessment that goes into the, into the fund.
Okay, so, does that need to be listed in an out, allowed uses of funds?
Marie, can I?
Well, let me, let me see Paul's answer on that. Do we need to add that?
Allowed use of funds, I don't know, I, I think operations, repair, and maintenance of the sewer, where, I mean, I guess we don't have salaries, but it's always been meant to cover, as part of operations, I guess.
Salaries and benefits? I just don't know if they, um, Mark?
Yeah, I, I mean, we've actually, because I recall, we paid for sewer work out of the sewer enterprise fund. So, what you're proposing in number two, we've done. But you also have down allowed uses of reserves, and, and so, that, there's the, the fine line of what's the allowed use of the fund versus the allowed use of the reserves? Because the reserves already allow for the outright purchase of capital equipment, infrastructure, and all that kind of stuff. And, and we've done that. And so, I'm just wondering, is there a, you know, i, i, is it, is it duplicative, is it, you know, or?
This should be under 25, I think.
No, I mean, we, we actually went, because at one point, our, our sewer reserves were-
No, I mean, back on the regular fund.
Were way up there, and so, we just said, we got to bring that down, and it said, instead of bonding some, a sewer on some street, I remember we paid for it out of the, out of the sewer enterprise fund. So, we've done that. I'm just wondering, is, is, was that an allowed use of fund, or an allowed use of, of the reserve? And so, I'm just trying to short circuit, do we need to, I, I support what you put in there, Paul, but I think we're already doing it, and it's covered under the allowed use of the reserves. Um, as opposed to making a change in a policy that-
Very, very little of this I have changed. This is probably the wording that was in there earlier, from the original, or from our last amendment. Um, I, I, the only recommended changes that I really made were in allowed uses of funds in two-
Right, but that, that's the, that's the sewer portion to my, the way I read that, that's the sewer portion, portion of when we buy a, a dump truck, and we say the sewer is going to buy, spend 25% and water 25%, DPW 50%, that always, that was item number two, because that's an outright purchase of capital equipment. That was my understanding of what that-
So, you have no trouble with the change you make?
Are you going to?
I have, I have no trouble-
Except it's going to be over to that 25,000.
No, but, but it could be under, because, I mean, look, when we buy DPW pickup trucks, we got down there, you know, $5,000 sewer enterprise fund, and $5,000 water enterprise fund, and $10,000 general fund, so-
But they're coming out of the funds instead of the reserve, though.
But what I'm saying is that it, I, it, some of it's less than $25,000 coming out of the fund, but the use of reserves is, is also, I, I just want to make sure we don't paint ourselves into a corner here, Paul.
I don't even know where we got that from.
And we've got to allow for what we, what we've been doing for the last 25 years on capital.
So, you're saying you don't want him to change it to over 25,000? You want it to stay up to 25,000?
Or do we just eliminate up to 25?
Because over 25,000, we tend to bond it, and therefore, it goes down to the, the bottom line, allowed use of reserves.
So, anything, 25,000 to 500?
Right, right, there's the actual revenue of the fund, and there's the reserves.
No, I, I didn't see what you're saying. Um, so, so I guess the question on two, should we just eliminate, or do you want to, do you want to have it up to 25,000?
I, I'd eliminate, I'd, the reason it was, it was in there, I think, is so it's consistent with capital. But if you eliminate that phrase up to 25,000, I got no problem with that.
Yeah, I, I have no, I have no problem with eliminating that last part of it, and just putting a period after systems.
Yeah, I mean-
So, that's the only change that was made? Do you feel operations?
No, there's another, there's another change, um, under not allowed uses.
Okay.
Um, the minimum reserve balance, where it says the target balance of the sewer reserve fund shall be maintained at the level that is, maintain the level that is not less than $500,000. By vote of the select board in town meeting, the funds may fall below the minimum level to fund capital needs of less than, again, I put, I changed it from 100,000 to 500,000.
Why, Paul? I mean, I, I, personally, I, I, I think we need a substantial minimum level of the reserves, only because we could have a sewer line break in the middle of winter, or multiple ones that run up the bills pretty darn quickly, that we got to be able to pay for.
You're agreeing with what Paul has put in there?
Because what-
Of not less than 500.
What if that sewer break costs us a quarter of a million dollars?
But-
And, and our, and our reserve is at 490.
But that's what the reserve was for, to pay for.
Right, right, but this says we wouldn't be able, unless I'm reading it wrong, the minimum level, needs of less than 100,000.
Oh, I see what you're saying. In other words, when can you, when can you use that 500,000?
Right.
Can you use it all up? I get it, okay.
Right, so, then, if we had the five, if it was a $500,000 amount, you know, we could also, if you have bond or whatever, but that, it, it's reading of it, it was very, somewhat complicated.
So, everyone agrees with, uh, the minimum reserve balance change and the addition of number two, is it? Two, under allowed uses of funds? Anyone have trouble with those two changes? Any other changes people want to put into the policy? Do you think we need to have salaries or benefits, or do you feel that's covered under operations? It's probably covered under operations.
I, I would say it's covered under, I mean, we have, we've done it since day one, and we have, you know, it's standard practice.
So, is there a motion to approve the new sewer enterprise fund policy as amended in those two areas?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Further discussion? Now, all those in favor? All right, so, let's move on to-
Can I ask that the revised and approved motion be, or policy now be distributed to us in the next week or so?
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll-
And then you will post this?
I will post this, and then I'll, I'll, Deb will update the policy manual.
Okay, wonderful. Okay, so now, we're going to the sewer enterprise fund.
No, the storm water.
Storm water.
Actually, I would say, let's go to the water enterprise fund. The only reason why I say that, because the exact same changes were made-
Oh, okay.
In the water enterprise fund, as were done just to the sewer fund.
So, is there a motion to approve the amended, uh, water enterprise fund with allowed uses of funds, number two, then, as well as the minimum reserve balance?
Some of them.
Is there a second?
One of them.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, now, we'll move on to the-
The storm water enterprise fund policy, um, is, is into one, it's brand new, so, there is nothing to amend, I guess, from a standpoint of, of something that was previously approved. I tried to do it in the same fashion as the water and sewer fund policies were written. Um, you have a little history up on top around the purpose. Um, under sources, it gets a little bit different, because currently, the, the general fund subsidized, um, a good portion of the, uh, the sewer, of, of the storm water enterprise fund. And FY 20, in FY 20, basically, the general fund subsidy was 65% um, of the full budget. Um, this, this board had a discussion previously about gradually moving up, um, the, or I should say gradually reducing the general fund subsidy. Um, and I believe there was a commitment for FY 21 to increase, or to decrease the subsidy down to 57.5%, which would then say that the fees would cover, instead of 35%, 42.5% of the budget. Um, the board also made a commitment to reduce that, that general fund subsidy over the next 10 to 15 years. Gradually reducing the subsidy, again, over the next 10 to 15 years. For the most part, everything else is written here identical to what the water and sewer funds look like. And we would have to make the amendment to allowed use of funds under number two, where it says up to $25,000 on this, but that would be the only other change that would be needed if there's agreement on the, on the, really, it's the source of income paragraph that is probably needs to really be looked at and the board be comfortable with.
Richard?
Paul, question, clarification. The new, the new construction down here, the medical complex, is that being added to this as it's built?
It, it, it would be added unless they apply for an abatement.
They put in a lot of their own su, systems.
Right, they, they did put a lot in.
So, we, we would be picking that up. Um, but again, if, if, if they've gone through the abatement process and, and, you know, have proved, proven that, you know, they meet the criteria, um, it certainly would be granted to them.
But abatement's-
But they will be billed.
They're still paying something, they're just paying less.
Right, right, they, if they're managing it, that there's a reduced, there's a reduced fee.
Yeah, because they're still getting rid of the water, they're just controlling release.
Right, but again, um, the, the policy was written regarding that, um, I don't want to say they were engineering terms, but, um, it, it, it kind of, God, I don't remember exactly, but if there was some type of, of storm water management, it did get some reduction.
They put in swales, they put in swales to, so that storm water didn't lose, leave their property. Or some degree of it.
It'll leave, they just control the discharge and control the pollutants.
Mark?
Yeah, I, I'm just wondering if we ought not tighten up the last sentence of the source of income, because, so we know, or we set a policy, as part of the policy, that we're going to go from 65% subsidy to 0% subsidy over a period of X number of years, which means 3% a year, or 4% a year, as opposed to leaving it a little more open the way it is now.
I, I would love for you to do that, but your, your general conversation prior was kind of open.
Right.
So, I didn't want to-
If we say 15, 20, 35 is when we're paying, we're going to catch up on our pension.
But maybe we want to do it over 20, but maybe we want to do it over 25 years.
Have you ever heard the Big Bang Theory?
All I'm saying is, do it over the next 25 years, so we can, as Paul puts together a three-year forward plan of, of budgets, he knows how much more he can put into this plan.
The reason I, yeah, yeah. The reason I worry about the longer line is, I think that was one of the things auditor, as well as the standard of poor was saying, wasn't it?
Right, the auditors brought it up, and, and I said that I, I would bring this forward during the budget process about enterprise funds. Certainly, this one, if we're moving forward with reducing the general fund subsidy, is really going to meet the letter of what an enterprise fund is, and that's basically a self-sustaining type of operation. The recycling trash enterprise fund that we have, it funded 80-something percent by the general fund. It's been 80% by the general fund since day one. Um, it really doesn't qualify, and my recommendation is, would be to actually, we, we change that to a, just put it into the operations as a general fund operation. Um, we can get the same type of information that we're currently getting by doing it as an enterprise fund. However, it, it truly does not meet the letter of what an enterprise fund is supposed to do, and that would get that kind of off the books of our-
How is it hard is that to do, to?
It, it's not hard at all. It's, it's, um, no, it's, it's not, it's not hard. It would, you, the general fund budget wouldn't necessarily, um, I mean, it, it would, it would go up a little with all the line items, but then, you may recall the way that it's written, when we go to appropriate the money for the, uh, recycling, trash recycling enterprise fund, it said, you know, $295,000 coming from fees, $800,000 coming from the general fund. Well, we'd eliminate the $800,000 coming from the general fund, and it would be, all be put up within the general fund budget, if you can follow all of that. But it, it wouldn't be hard. Wouldn't be hard at all.
Tom?
I just, in the source of income, where it's, it talks about the equivalent residential units ERU use.
Yep.
I just wonder if it should be clearer in this, that this is, these are applied to basically every property in the town, right?
Yes.
And, because it, later, it talks about its, you know, when it talks about residential, criminal residential units, it kind of throws it off. I, I, I wonder if, because if the source is every property in the town, then I wonder if it should just be in here.
Um, I, I guess I could stick that in there, but the actual term equivalent residential unit is in the bylaw.
Okay.
So, I, I would, I understand what you're saying, that, that the ERU is applicable to every property in town, whether exempt or non-exempt type of tax, yeah, that's fine.
Okay, just because Pearson was looking through it for the first time, but it could be scratching their head.
Yep.
It's every property in town. You know, we, that was a big thing when we voted on it, so.
So, going back to the last line, and does some, does anyone have a preference about saying over the next 15 years, or the next 10 years, 25, or should we just leave it with the spam of another policy we won't break?
I mean, you know, 10 to 15 years is a, is a, I think you either say by 2025, or you say, or you say the next, I mean, 10 to 15 years is a big, big time period. 10 years makes a big difference versus 15 years.
The unfortunate thing, if you say by 2035-
With a target of 2020, fiscal year 2020.
Right, but then, it requires me coming to this board every year saying, we're going to go up 3%, we're going to go up 5%. If you did it in equal increments, that that 57.5 will be done over 15 years, we just do the division, and every year, it's going to go up 4.2% or whatever it comes out to.
I think we should do that. Well, and that's fine, but then, then, and that's what I was suggesting, instead of saying the next 10 to 15 years, you'd say over the next 15 years.
In, in equal, in equal increments?
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, okay. It's in equal increments.
Suggesting, right.
All right, um, so, let's put the motion on the floor. The three areas that we're changing is, um, number two, under allowed use of funds, is that it, Paul?
Yes, we're going to eliminate up to $25,000.
And then, we're going to add a line under source of income saying all-
Applicable to every property in town.
Yes, and then, the third thing is, we're going to go to 15-
Reduce the general fund subsidy by 2035 in equal, in equal increments?
Yes. Any other, I don't think there were any other-
Or is it 2036?
2035, oh, I don't know.
36, right, 15 increments.
Okay.
I'll still be on the board.
Well, I'll do public comments.
Yeah, we do public comments.
You can-
Fire rescue would make a lot of money off you guys.
Um, okay, is there a motion on the floor for those three amendments?
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, any further discussion? All right, all those in favor? All right, let's move on to, that was the last of the-
Yeah, those are the four, um, areas that, or the four policies that were brought forward.
Okay, is there any, any others you can bring to us next time, but keep them in mind?
I, I, I will look to see which, um, I don't know if I want to take them to see which ones are, are most outdated, or just follow through a pattern of how they're alphabetical, or how they fall sequentially in your policy book. So, I, one way or another, I'm going to do that.
Okay.
Probably sequentially, in the way they fall in your book is easier.
All right, well, we'll leave room in the agenda next time, and then we'll add the-
Right, and I, and I will, and I will provide these updates, um, probably within the next, um, I don't know, do you want it in your packet, or you just want me to send them out?
Oh, put it in the packet.
Put it in the packet.
That way, everyone, it, sometimes when it goes to us directly, I'm not sure if it's getting up there, so.
Okay, then I'll get them to Deb for the packet. And he will check any OPEB.
Thank you. All right, Lynn, do you want to talk to us about charter review? We've got to get back to that.
So, similar to the select board town manager policy, just started going through what the charter review committee report identified, and the ones that hadn't been included at the last, or at the spring town meeting last year. School committee wants to take a look at the ones that dealt with superintendent and School committee wants to take a look at the ones that dealt with superintendent and school matters. So, they will be doing that at one of their upcoming meetings, and then letting us know. And then I went through the town manager ones. So, it seemed to be, there were three categories that hadn't been dealt with. Town manager, the financial ones, and the school committee ones. So, school committees, school department ones, those are being reviewed by school committee, they'll come back to you. The town manager ones I have in front of you tonight, and then the financial ones will come to you at the February eighteenth meeting.
Does that include the capital planning, financial, 'cause that was a big-
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that's all. So, I think you can see in this document, I did track changes, and it's strictly just what the review committee was recommending.
Uh, do you guys want to go through this line by line? Do you want to spend some time thinking about it? And this is, once this is approved by us, it will be sent to town meeting in the spring. But I wanted us to start working our way through them. If we look at section five point one, the addition is reappearance of the town manager shall be by affirmative vote of a majority of the members of the select board. That isn't different, it just wasn't included.
Correct, I believe that's just kind of putting it in writing, with the practice you followed.
It wasn't a majority, it was a supermajority.
I think the original appointment-
Oh, reappearance, reappearance.
The original appointment, a supermajority.
I brought up liquor license violations for some reason.
Oh. Then the other is to appoint and remove subject into the civil laws where applicable.
Powers and duties.
Yeah, it's under powers and duties, I'm sorry. Powers and duties, part B, they crossed out subject to civil service laws were applicable, because we're not a civil service now. Okay, so the next thing that they added is all officers subordinate to town manager, the assistant assessor, and all subordinates and employees for whom there's no other method of appointment is provided in the charter except appointments made. So, the only thing that was added to this is the assistant assessor. Why was that different?
Because technically, they're not a town, a department head, but they ought to be hired by-
Actually, there's a specific law that allows the assessors to appoint that position. And David, David Martel had, or former town council, had ruled that they still held that authority even when the charter was approved. So, this was now rectifying it, that that appointment would now be made by the town manager, as opposed to the board of assessors.
All right, the next addition that was added was appointments of department heads made by the town manager shall not become effective until presented to the select board for approval and approved. If neither approved nor rejected by the select board by the completion of two successive meetings of the select board, the appointment shall be deemed approved. So, there's two parts of that. One is the appointments have to wait for our approval, and-
That's already, that's already part of the deal.
So, what I think it's doing is just adding, instead of giving you a fifteen-day timeframe, that sentence below that's being removed, it's saying two successive meetings.
Right.
Because there could be more than fifteen days between your meetings, or less.
Marie, the question, the concern I have is that this doesn't allow for extenuating circumstances. For example, gee, the board would like to get more background information on this potential candidate or potential appointee. That may take a week or two, and if we, you know, or may take a third meeting. And, so by, I'm gonna go out on a limb, by doing due diligence, we may in fact be allowing for the, what I'll call recess appointment, or whatever it is to take place. And it doesn't allow us that, that, you know, legacy, I mean, that opportunity to say, look, we'd like to get more information, or find, find more things out.
No, the select board, the chair should just not make the second meeting. They could wait a whole thirty days for the second meeting.
But it says, well, but our meetings are scheduled, the first and the third Mondays of every month. I mean, the fact, I, I, I'm more than happy to put a limit to it, or put a, say, look, you gotta act within some, some timeframe, but I can envision a situation where, you know, you can't do it in two successive meetings, you need a third, or maybe even a fourth. I mean, you can't let this drag on forever, and I think that was the intent.
Or do you want to say for three successive meetings of the select board?
For me, it's better than two, but, you know, I'm just wondering why we did that. Is it because there was a, I mean, the fact is, we've never sat back and not taken things up, and let somebody, let a potential appointee hang on for, I mean, it's been-
It could be the, the culture of Washington, that we're protecting ourselves from a future filibuster or something. But we could push that out to three. Tom?
The term meeting here means me, a group where there's a quorum, right? If there's not a quorum, it's not a meeting.
No, it's not a meeting.
And you may, you may want to say regularly scheduled meetings, too, because you may have a budget to meet.
Because if there's a scheduled meeting and there's no quorum, then we couldn't vote, and, and we might not be ready, we might need more time. So, I guess that's the other thing, when we, we might want to define a meeting as having a full, enough members for a quorum.
I mean, Lynn, do you see an issue with going back to, you know, just saying appointments of departments had, made by the town manager shall become effective until, shall not become effective until presented to the select board for approval and approved? And just leave out that if-
I think there should be a timeframe, and I, I don't see a problem with the days, I think fifteen days is too short. But I think going from, anywhere from twenty-one to thirty days would be okay. Because you also, on the other side of this, you have an offer to a person, or I would have an offer to a person that-
Right.
Someone else may-
I don't want the clock to run out before they, you know, know where they stand, but I-
Oh, thirty days then. I mean, we have to act within thirty days when it's presented to them. That potentially gives us three meetings, or four meetings, or-
That's technically probably two meetings, it's thirty days, or two and a half, so Lynn, are you happy with thirty days?
That's a long time.
Well, that's the same thing as two meetings, if you ask me.
No, but thirty days, we can schedule five meetings or six meetings in that thirty, I mean, you know, the scenario I laid out that we want more information says, look, we'll, we'll schedule an additional meeting to do this, and to ratify this, this nomination, but it's gotta be done within thirty days, but as, as opposed to two meetings.
What would, I, thirty days is a long time, Mark.
I understand.
That's a long time to have somebody sit, and you could easily lose them to another job. It's a long period of time.
Has this been an issue?
Never.
Okay.
And I wonder, I wonder what, what could we ask? I mean, what, if the town manager is happy with the appointment, what could we possibly ask for more information on?
So, you're happy with the two successive meetings?
Yeah, I think two successive meetings, but we may need that much, but thirty days is a long time.
The one that worries me about that two successive meetings, though, is what Paul brought up about a budget meeting. What if you schedule a special separate meeting?
Two regularly scheduled.
Yeah, two regular meetings.
Okay.
I mean, two successive meetings could almost be thirty days, too. If you have five Mondays, and the appointment is made right after the second meeting of the month, and you gotta wait two weeks, and you have, your meeting is the first week, you're actually waiting till the third week of the next month. I mean, it could be thirty days, depending on the timing, even with two regularly scheduled meetings.
So, should we say completion of two regularly scheduled meetings?
Does anybody know why the charter commission wanted to change this?
I, I, I mean, I don't recall it, I think Stephen was worried about it, it kind of dragging out for some reason, that this would prevent it from dragging out. I don't remember if there was a specific incident.
Well, he added more time than fifteen days. It was fifteen days. Two meetings was more than fifteen days.
Unless he was, you know, the fifteen days really wasn't cutting it either.
Yeah, but if everyone's happy with the two, we'll just, I'm worried about the, the, what do they call that? The statute, let's not parse the statute, we'll keep going, yeah. Okay, all employees of the town, other than those who come under the jurisdiction of the school committee, is this one of the sections that the school committee wanted to weigh in on?
No.
Okay, are provided in general laws, are pointed by the officers of the Commonwealth, or are appointed by the pursuant or subject to the jurisdiction. All right, I'm a little confused by that. All employees, other than those under the school committee and superintendent, or appointed by someone other, or who are appointed, okay, so it says, anyone, unless they're appointed by the select board, or they're appointed by officers of the Commonwealth, or under the jurisdiction of the school committee, has the town managers in charge of them.
I was just thinking of the new library agreement.
I was gonna say, and that's why that was put in here.
Well, does that violate the agreement that was just signed?
I, I think the, I'm not quite sure who makes the appointment, I think the trustees make the appointment.
Oh, I think if they make the appointment, and we approve, don't they go by us, the select board or something like that?
Yeah, yeah, it still has to go to the select board, but the appointment itself, I don't recall if it's the town manager, or if it's the trustees.
But, but it says are subject to the jurisdiction of the town manager, and in fact, our new library agreement says the library-
No, 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 it's gone backwards, so it's this weird language, where it says, anyone-
All employees-
Other than, other than, all employees in the town, other than those under the school committee, other than those appointed by the Commonwealth, other than those appointed by the select board, are subject to the town manager. So, everything's carved out in the middle, and, but if this, well, let's check and make sure this-
The library.
The library agreement-
Yes, the trustees.
They appoint everybody who works for the library?
Yeah, and, but now the, well, it's, it's not just, it's a committee, the town manager's on the committee, but they do the appointment.
They do the appointment. Well, let's just take, make sure we're not in trouble with that one section. The next one, to serve as a public information officer, okay? So, this makes the town manager now the public information officer, according to the charter. And, in order to maximize distribution of reports, documents, utilizing both printed electronic means, including the town's website, to keep the community informed. Um, I think that's a good writing. Anyone have problems with that? No? Okay, next, to apply for, accept, and expend grant funds. This is what the town manager does, oversees adherence to conditions of grants received by the town.
Expending grant funds, grants are still funds that are under the jurisdiction of town meeting. I'm, you know, can, you don't think so, Paul?
No, if we receive a grant, it does not have to be accepted at town meeting.
And it doesn't go into the general fund budget?
They, no, they are, they are accounted for what's known as a special revenue fund. So, it, there is no town meeting approved required.
But someone has to sign for those.
Somebody has to sign for it, yes.
Yeah, so the town manager should be the person.
Yeah, but the only, the only thing that's open on grants, and it may just be, it can also expand programs within the community. And there's a point where the select board should be in the process of anything that expands the scope of the community. The regular, the regular grants totally disagree, should fall in, and we, but if there's something that's gonna expand the long-range financial obligations of our community, then we would take the select board and be in the loop on those particular type of grants.
I think there would be more informational in the, I'm just concerned about this, this, the board making decisions on whether to take grants or not.
No, it's not what I said. I said the ones that expand, like, like the canine.
Right, and we've, you guys had discussion in that very sense about the canine. Now, I, I would think that if the board was in disagreement with the grant, they would not fund the general fund portion to continue the operations of that grant, or whatever that grant was for.
Well, yeah, but that would be holding somebody hostage, Paul, and that, that bring, what I'm trying to do is make sure we don't have a policy that breeds contempt into it. And it's so easy for that to, with the wrong people in the wrong time, you've got a real conflict, especially on a grant that comes in to expand a service in our community that the board had no input on.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
And that's the only one I'm talking about. I'm not talking about all the grants that normally you put in for, just the ones that expand the financial obligations of our community.
Should, do, do we want to add a sentence, grants that create new programs?
I'd like to hear what the town manager thinks.
Uh, well, I'm just looking at what currently exists to coordinate grant application, because-
The wording was, the wording, I think, was put in, I believe it's put in by Stephen, because there was, there was some controversy about the canine operation there. And, and it sounds like that's what spun this off. The fact is, basically telling the board, you don't have anything to do with this. And that one actually expanded operations on our town. It took more money from the budget as the grant ran out. And, and I don't think we ever had that totally laid out, and you remember the conflict there was? Because basically, just come in and said, I've accepted the grant, I'm, hey, I can do this, we're getting the dog, blah, 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 this, that, and the other, and it was, it wasn't good.
Well, we had votes, I remember people voting against the dog. So, there was a, there was an actual approval process that went in front of the select board.
No, no.
And then we ended up voting for it.
Now, if you go back, if you go back and look at it, it didn't come down that easy. There was discussion, but I'm just saying, that's the only grants that I, and, and I don't think we'd ever have that problem again, because I don't think we have the same relationship. But yet, this was put in because of a relationship.
Yes, I could think of other grants in the past that would have, had we had a town manager, would have equated to a same type of discussion they used to have. If you hire a new police officer, the grant would cover seventy-five percent of the first year, fifty percent of the second year, twenty-five percent of the third year, and then it's on your own.
Right, same type of thing.
It would fall into the same category. Now, I, you know, I, I haven't seen any of those recently, but I completely understand what you're saying. I just don't know how to, I don't know what wording you ought to put in there to control.
Richard, would it help if it said, within current budget allowances, or something?
Well, no, it deals with expansion of programs only, Mark. It's not, you know, it's not a grant that they get to offset something that we're currently spending money on. It's, the fact is, after it's gone, then we're obligated. It's, it's like putting permanent personnel against grant money, you know, you don't do it.
Well, do you want to say, received by the grant, the town manager shall inform the select board of future costs, or should analyze future costs for?
Well, I would hope the grant process would be in review, if the town manager, and I feel very comfortable that this would be what we have now, that if Lynn was searching out to expand operations to a, to a startup grant, that there would be a robust discussion in this room, and we would say, yeah, we agree. It's sort of like what we had when John came in with the ambulance, that was a similar type thing.
I think one of the things I'm concerned about is, I'm not sure if the town manager is always informed when departments receive actual capital gifts.
But they don't get them to expand programs.
Well, some of that does expand the program.
No, it doesn't, they don't hire people with that and all that.
No, 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 I'm talking about when you have equipment, that equipment has to be maintained.
Oh, yeah, but that's minor.
But I just want to make sure you're informed of that.
Yeah, and I was wondering if this is more of a policy, and that you could, there would be a conversation if you were to apply for a grant, that all angles of it be reviewed, because-
And it is a policy, it's a checkbox.
Yeah, a lot of communities do use grant funds to support staff, to get the program off the ground.
Right. What if we took out the word accept, and said, to apply for, expend grant funds, and oversee adherence to conditions of grants received by the town, you know, in, with the, with the acceptance or approval acceptance of the select board, or something like that? Is that, it's, it's the, you know, go look for them, go do them, but before we buy into something, let's just make sure we're all in.
Well, you know why I hesitate on that?
Yeah.
Because I heard that we, we had money from the walking school bus, and we're talking, this is probably before your time, Mark, too, and it was, the select board said, no, we don't want it. So, you know, I worry that sometimes, as a board, we're a little reactionary, and-
But I think Lynn hit it right on the head, when she said, and that's what we used to do in the feds, too. If there was a program that was gonna expand services, I had to check the box and fill in all the details, before I was able to put in for it. And that's something the town manager would be doing, Maria's a custodian of grants. And she would do this internal review process, and come to this board, and she says, I've got a wonderful opportunity, but here's what I think.
Mark?
Can we say, to apply for, comma, with the approval of the select board, comma, and subsequently accept and expend grant funds? Because really, it's, if the, if the board approves the application, I think in that discussion, you'll know, you'll know what the funds would be for. I guess you could put it after, after funds as well.
Yeah, I would like, like you said, maybe to approve applications, but for them to put all this work into it, and then come to the select board, and the select board says, no, we really don't like that. I like when you said, applications, you could give us a whole list at the beginning. This is such a big change from the way we've been working, maybe we should sit on this, and you can think about it, too. Tom?
Another thing would be to have a statement that grants that would be tied to, you know, a full-time equivalency position, you know, that if you, if it was an expanding of, because that's the biggest concern, really, is, isn't it? that's the biggest concern, really, is, isn't it, if we're going to hire another person?
You can, you can conceive of it being, we're, we're taking on equipment that has major maintenance costs or replacement costs or something like that.
Increasing hours of operations.
Yeah.
At the library, you know, maybe we've got to grant to increase hours, and then we just continue. So it costs us more money, but we don't add a new person, just money.
So maybe we should, I, because I don't want to, to have a general statement saying that we need to approve, but I think of a more specific statement about, you know, things that would increase, um, staff use or expand programming, those things.
Yeah.
Ward Smith.
Why isn't it just to manage the grant app, manage the, the process for applications, acceptance, expenditure of grant applications, and that whole, by saying to manage it, that implies, or, or could imply that there's a, a, it's, it's a joint effort with the select board, that it's not a unilateral kind of decision. But clearly, the intent here is to say the town man, you know, grants ought to be going through the town manager's office.
Yeah.
You know, the application, the acceptance, the, you know, making sure we're expending them right, all that kind of stuff. And I think that's what I'd like to see come out of it. And the issue is, we're doing it as a group of six people and not, you know, you know, going off in the deep end. That's why I think that it's a management of the, of the grant process, is what we want to allocate to the town manager here.
So could you look at that, maybe get back to us in the next meeting on that S?
I think, just to throw it in the category, I think you want to put in non-school grants.
I think it could be an easy statement.
Or she's.
Because the only concern.
You're not going to get involved.
Exactly. New, maybe new grants that expand programs.
Expand, any, any grant that expands programs, we just.
Well, because some of the old ones might, I mean, like, we, see, let's say, if we say grants that expand programs, regional dispatch is going to expand programs, so you might, even though we, this group has all approved and voted on it, next year, we could get pulled out of the regional dispatch by a whole different group of select board members, actually, one or two votes. I just worry about us.
We're in it already, though.
Now, if we refuse the next grand, grand round.
I don't think it would ever happen, Marie, because we're already involved in that.
Well, so you've heard all our concerns. Good luck writing that.
It's pretty, I think.
If we go to the next one, to, uh, let's see. Ensure the town maintains emergency preparedness plans and facilitates training so as to be proficient in those plans. Uh, the only thing they changed is the word trains to facilitates training.
The town manager's not doing the training, make the change.
Okay, so no problem with that one. The next section, to consider environmental sustainable and energy efficiency when managing town programs and resources. Does anyone have problems with adding that? With more duties, okay. The acting town manager absence, it's set up by a letter, it's by notice filed with the town clerk and select board.
So what's that mean, it can be emailed instead of a letter?
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah, so that way it's an email rather than a letter. So that's sort of following what we're doing now. Um, going down to removal procedures by notice, by affirmative vote of four of its members. So that's going from a majority to a supermajority in order to, uh, fire the town manager.
I, yeah, Stephen.
I don't have a problem with that.
Stephen wanted, I don't think it should be a supermajority, though.
Well, this came out of the committee, right?
Yeah, well, no, it, it came from Stephen. It came from Stephen, yeah.
Well, I think, do we say something so serious?
Well.
You'd want to have a, a strong backing of the select board.
But you're, you're retaining and putting the person in the position with a simple majority.
Right.
Okay, why don't you have the same thing for termination by a simple majority?
Termination's going to cost the town.
Well, I'd say you originally put him in by supermajority.
Is that four? Those four?
No, it was a supermajority for hiring.
For the, for, right, for the first appointment.
For renewing the contract, it was a simple majority.
Right, yes.
Right.
And why would you go for a supermajority? Because, you know, let's, let's be honest, we know why it's in there. It's because there was a feeling that you could always have, you could carve out at least two members that were going to agree with you of this board.
Right.
And, and that's why, that's why he wanted to change it to four. And this was Stephen's amendment, there's no doubt about this, nobody else, this is, this was Stephen that attended the meetings. He wanted to get this up to a supermajority to, to terminate.
How do other towns, I don't even know what other towns have.
I don't know. Lynn, can you help us?
Yeah, could you?
I can't speak to other towns, but I'm just wondering why you wouldn't have removal have the same threshold as appointment.
Well, then why have it for the, for, for the appoint, yeah, for the reappointment?
Appointment is at least four members.
Right.
Well, Lynn, it should be, everything should be four then. Should be supermajority for reappointment, too.
I agree with that.
For contracts?
Yeah, it'd have to be. It can't, can't be one of them that's different.
I, I like, yeah.
Okay, so we'll go with all three, as being four of its members.
So then we'll, we'll be adding in, we'll be amending five dash one.
Yes, to make that four.
To say, at that bottom sentence there.
Supermajority, or four out of five?
It'll say, reappointment of the town manager shall be by the affirmative vote of a supermajority of the members of the select.
Or four, I think the word.
It could say four, yeah.
Supermajority is four.
Okay.
Because appointment currently says, that first sentence currently says.
And it should be supermajority of the select board instead of supermajority of a meeting, too.
Well, that's why they say four of its members, rather than, yeah, so it could just be affirmative vote of four members. Okay, now, uh, removal, again, it says four of its members, so if we're going to be consistent, we can leave the removal there as four of its members. So the only thing that people have concerns about will be, uh, section S on grants, and so we won't vote on this until we hear back from Lynn. So this will be on our next meeting. Uh, Mark, is somebody else?
No, just a comment or clarification, and Lynn, maybe you can clarify this for us in the next couple of weeks. But I, I was, I was at a Pioneer Valley Transit Authority meeting today, we were talking about administration, administrator salary renewal, and, and the term of the contract came up, and, and there was a comment by folks from other communities that said that Commonwealth passed a new law that said the town really can't enter into a multi-year contract, and, and they said, you can give an administrator a ten-year contract, but after a year of the, you know, if you want to remove that person for cause, or even not for cause, you can do that, you're not obligated to pay off the balance of the contract under common, the laws, laws of the Commonwealth. I thought that was astounding. I, I didn't, had never heard of it before, and I don't.
I never heard of it.
I, I don't know if that's in fact the case, but, but.
How long is your contract?
But there, there was the argument for extending the contract.
I'm not sure. I know, I don't know all the details, but I know there was an issue in, um, a community in the middle part of the state, that paid a very, very hefty, um, contract buyout.
Okay, that must.
So that, and that was within the last eight months.
I can't believe they can.
So I don't, I don't know.
Rewrite everyone's contract.
Yeah, I, I was surprised by it.
How legal that is, but.
I think it'll be moving forward in PDPA with.
Wow.
A longer, and, and, and the only issue is, you know, the length of the contract, whether it's a, you know, generally three-year contract, or five-year contract, ten-year contract, doesn't really bind the community to, well, gee, if, if the board turns over in five years, you're ended up having to pay somebody for five more years after that. You may not have to, I don't know.
Well, they tried to do that in the private sector. So many companies would like.
We, you know, I still, I'm not sure about this, having a supermajority for this three, you know, the approval of the contract, you know, every two years or every three years. I'm not sure about that, because you could have two members of the board sort of force a whole search and everything, just because they didn't like the contract, I guess, or they thought it was, I don't know, I mean, that seems like a potential.
So I see, you're saying, so instead of saying it's a, uh, so you're saying one person on the board, or two people on the board.
Two people could, could force, you know, elimination of a person, um, because they can't get that fourth vote.
Oh, on the renewal?
Yeah, and they'd say, well, no, I have no contract now, and then.
So that's why you prefer to stay at just a majority for a reappointment, rather than.
Yeah, because then if you, if you really are saying, we need to get rid of this person, then you, you get four votes. I, I have no problem with that. But to say that, you know, basically, you're going to say, well, we're going to have to start a whole new search because two people on the board decide, you know, we're not going to approve this contract.
It's a good point.
Yeah, that is a good point. So we'll, we'll address it when we go back to this. We'll keep that section open, too. So it's not just S, but also, um, the.
Five dash one.
Five dash one, and also, you're going to get back to us on B, the bottom part of B, regarding if the library is.
Yes, yep.
And actually, you know, um, the sections, there's all sorts of weird, why is there just S, T, W? Do those all have to be changed?
Those are the only ones that had changes.
Oh, okay, all right.
The rest of them were.
All right, now I understand. All right, so if you could, um, just check the bottom of B to make sure we don't have a violation with the library agreement.
Mm-hmm. I understand while I was gone that, uh, Tom was mentioning that the four instead of, or three instead of the four.
Yeah, he was concerned about that.
See, I don't see any difference in any of those appointments. The initial appointment, the reappointment, or the termination.
Well, I guess my point was that if you had, you have board of five people, if two people decide not to renew the contract, then you have to do a whole new search. I mean, you have to get rid of that person.
Yeah.
And that, and versus.
So what if, what if four did it?
No, because you, I, I just think it's, you know, when we, if we're going to eliminate someone, we should say, we want to eliminate them, withdraw their contract, you know, terminate them, we get four votes. I have no problem with that. But the contract renewal could be forced by a small portion of the board.
Well, it's the same, it's the same argument, Tom, on all the levels, for hiring, firing, or renewal. It's the same argument.
Well, I disagree. It's not the same argument.
Okay, so well.
Sure, it's four, four.
Not the same argument.
What do you mean, it's not the same argument? It's the same, it's the same action for renewal or termination. It's the exact same action.
Because one, you know, one, a contract, some, two people could say, well, we don't agree with that contract, that's too much money, and then the town is forced to do a whole new search for a new town manager over the contract. Not about his behavior, not he, this, he or she has committed something that causes him to be terminated, and then we're, we're voting on a termination. That's different from a contract. I, that's why they're not the same thing.
So we're going to, we're going to talk about this next session. It's being rolled over.
Wow.
Eighteen.
I think about a little more.
Do you want to talk about the select board policies in the next section?
Yep. So this was the, my first attempt at some of the ones, and, um, hopefully, the one you received maybe has the track changes in it, at least starting with the liquor license violations. If not, I can tell you, um, right after the items one, two, three, and four, I added in there, um, if the licensee has been in good standing for five years from the date of the last violation, the violation hierarchy will reset. I just picked five years. You, you can choose any amount of time you would like, but I, that was a common theme that came up at, um, the violation hearing. And then the second item, right below that I added, was that, uh, the hierarchy is a guide for the local license authority, um, and, but that the local license authority has discretion to levy any violation it deems fit for the infraction. And that is more of just a, almost cautionary to any licensee that's reading this, thinking, well, this is what you're adhered to, but if there's some really egregious violation, that you have the authority to choose any, any, um, violation you want to levy.
Okay.
And I did have a town council look at these, and, um, he was fine with them.
All right, any questions or issues with Lynn's recommendation on the liquor license violation policy? Is there a motion to approve the amended policy?
Some move.
Is there a second? Okay, Tom. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, thanks for your work on that.
Mm-hmm, and then there's others in here.
Okay, what, what about the naming policy?
This public, uh, this was just to clean up, to change the, strike the reference of the previous town manager's name and email address, and just leave it more generic, just so you don't have to keep updating it each time you have a change.
Where, and what policy is that in?
This is the public property naming policy.
Somehow I didn't see that.
It's a very minor change.
Okay, so this says includes all buildings, land, and other structures owned by the town, including schools. The select board shall make all decisions regarding the naming of the property, with the exception of discrete areas of the school building. Um, authority to make naming decisions for certain portions of the schools delegated to the school committee. The authority to name a school building shall reside with the select board. And then it gives the process on how we do it. So according to this, we agree, we can name buildings, we can, um, also put name on any other structures. So if there's anyone who wants to put a memorial up, or a department or something, it comes through the select board first. Like, we named the street, the Jim Russell Way, but anything else in the way of naming's got to go through the town manager and then to the select board. And I guess the suggestion can be supported by fifty or more registered voters. Everyone's happy with that number? And the request should be made to the select board for public discussion and vote.
Not many voters, is it?
No. About fifty, sometimes that's hard to collect.
Um, the sentence below that, I'm not sure is accurate now that I'm reading this.
The request will then be made on a select board meeting agenda for public.
No, sorry, the one below that, at the, the one after this paragraph, sorry.
Shall require a supermajority vote of the select board presence.
So I don't think you can, I think it's either supermajority, it's not who's present, because it would just be a quorum.
Okay, so you want to cross out present?
It's a supermajority of the select board, period.
Period, yep.
All right, anything else you want to change on this? Is there a motion to approve?
Now, Marie, what are the two changes we're approving?
Uh, one was that we're getting rid of the word, um, oh, now I've lost it. Um, the naming of the property shall require a supermajority vote of the select board, period. Members present is, is canceled out.
Right.
And, um, the, the old town manager's contact information was removed, and, um, I think that was it. Was there anything else you were changing?
No.
You didn't clean anything else up? Okay, so that's it.
Okay.
Is there a motion to approve?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Um, discussion? All those in favor? All right, and now we are the next thing.
Yeah, this one is just to completely strike the appendix to the website content policy.
Okay.
Um, mainly because with staff turnover, you would be having to update this every time someone left or joined town employment. Um, if you would like, we could leave in the departments, but I don't know that it's necessary.
And what about the appendix, what about the actual website content policy? Were you happy with it, or is that something we're going to have to review?
It was okay at my first glance. Um, I may, as I have time, I may have a change to it.
Okay. So is there a motion to approve the striking of the appendix to the website contact policy?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor? That was it?
Uh, one more.
Oh, there, I see it now.
Two more, sorry.
Okay, this is the operations subcommittee. Um, we don't really have an operations subcommittee for the select board. And I know there's been discussions about us having to finance and operations, and I think we've worked well with projects. Uh, what does the board think? If we, since it's not something we've been doing for a long time, that alone should be out of the policy. Uh, it's always open if we ever want to revive a subcommittee.
I was on the last operations subcommittee, and I'd support striking this.
Okay.
I'll tell you what I think of it.
Anyone else have a problem with it? Discussion? Okay, so is there a mo, that a motion, Mark?
Some move. Yeah, strike it.
Is there a second, Richard?
Second, second.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, now, the.
And then the last one.
Yes, operation, administrative code.
So I guess some of this is just a question for you as well. I don't. So I guess some of this is just a question for you as well. I don't, I'm not suggesting the administrative code be deleted, I just don't think it belongs in a policy book. I think it's a standalone document. But I don't know if there's reason for why it was included in a policy book.
I can answer that. This was part of the trying to enforce the charter that created, and then the creation of an independent, independent IT group that was both town and, and schools, and so this was to define what was meant when we did that. And so, in my opinion, we haven't been, I mean, you're just now seeing the, we still don't have an IT committee that's been functioning to advise it. And so, you know, I thought at the time that this was going to do things it didn't do, but we haven't been following it. I think it was part of the MOU, and I think it was, I think it was Jen Jester and I who wrote it at the time.
No, I don't, Jen was one of them who signed it.
Yep.
Yeah, so.
And I don't think that striking this, and this, I could be wrong, but I don't think that striking this deletes the code. I think it just removes it from your policy book, but I think the code still exists.
I'll make a motion to remove the administrative code, IT administrative code from our policy book, that's fine.
Is there a second?
Sorry.
Discussion, all those in favor? And so what is, I know you've had one meeting, how are you, is there a timeline that you're looking at? You think it'll be completed by the summer?
Oh, yes, yeah, I would say, right, Paul?
Yeah.
There wasn't, the changes weren't so difficult that we wouldn't be able to get something to you before June. It's just more a matter of time and giving it the time it needs.
Thank you for bringing these forward. I'm glad we're finally getting through the policies, the charter, I know it's just housework, but thank you for really starting to shepherd those things through, and thank you, Paul. One of the things you brought up, which we'd never done in previous years, was about the MMA, our conference we're going to this week, that if we attend certain ones, we're going to get money back for the town, so we were going to try to coordinate here who gets to see what.
Just run in and sign the log in, and that's all you have to do.
No.
I mean, yes.
Yeah, that's really all you have to do.
Yes.
And go to whatever session you want.
While we listen and collect the things, yes.
And that doesn't even take a vote.
And so was there, so she's going to send that out to all of us, do you want to?
Sure, we did.
Do you want to commit? Yeah, do you want to commit to anything, or?
Yeah, I already made the list of two or three things I want, a couple were on my list to go to anyways.
Okay, so everyone could just send me what they are thinking of attending, and then I'll create a chart, and if there's any holes in it, I'll run to some of those extras, and Debbie, we can always throw you in, sign for the law.
You just let me know which ones I need to go sign in, and I'll sign in.
Okay.
Quit the discussion.
Yeah, so everyone send me what you're doing, let me know where you are.
You're getting ready to shut down the meeting?
Yes, but there was one other thing I wanted to tell everyone. We're, Lynn's been working really hard on the water issue that's gone out. Do you want to tell us a little bit about what you're hoping to, we're having an upcoming meeting, and that the Board of Health was very interested in attending, so I was looking, what date do you think we're going to be ready for that, do you think?
Um, that's a good question.
Was it beginning of March, you thought?
Well, it's, some of it's a little bit of a moving target right now, depending on whether you want to hear from Springfield Water Sewer Commission again, or if you would like to wait until the study is done from Mott McDonald, who we've retained to do some analysis on what the town could improve on the town side. We know that there's some issues on Springfield's side, but we can't fix that. But we can, DEP thinks there's items on the town side that we could fix, so we've hired Mott McDonald to analyze that before we spend any money to make any infrastructure improvements. They should be wrapping that up in March sometime, and they can come in and present their findings. We could have Springfield Water Sewer come either before or after that. Board of Health would be invited to all of those meetings.
And when are the water rates coming in, Paul?
They don't have to be done until June.
I mean, when does Springfield tell us what their rates are?
Oh, they normally send a letter in December, and then unfortunately, they've always, they've, the last two years, they've amended it in March. So I would wait until after March, quite honestly, before I bring those to you folks. Because that way you also have a chance to look at the water and sewer budget, and the one that will go to town meeting, so that has some bearing on it also.
So I just want everyone to know, the future agenda is going to be on that, and Lynn's working hard to get the answer if residents are contacting you.
Are we doing secondary treatment still? Chlorine, DESK?
No.
So we're not, I know at one time, I think we were doing secondary treatment, because the residuals were low coming in. So if that's true, why is the trihalomethane problem not Springfield's problem, if we're not doing secondary treatment? They're delivering, they're delivering.
Essentially the exact question that I've been having.
Yeah, but I know before we were doing secondary treatment, because sometimes the residuals were down.
Yeah, I'm told that we are not adding anything other than fluoride.
Just fluoride, okay, and they don't have trihalomethanes in fluorides?
Uh, no, not that I'm aware of, no.
It's only chlorine.
No, there's a known problem at the treatment plant in Springfield. There's, they have eighty million dollars in upgrades or something astronomical to do, which is why I thought a presentation from them to you as a customer to get a better understanding of how they're tackling that. DEP does feel that there are some things that the town could do to our distribution that would help with our quality.
With their quality?
Well, yes, but once it hits our side, it's ours.
Yeah, because trihalomethanes are present in the water when we get it.
Yep.
Or it's being formed because of the high chlorine residuals that they're putting in, because they've got infrastructure problems, or suspended solves, or whatever they got in their water, because there has to be something in the water.
So we're interested in having them come too, yeah, and you coordinate what's going to work, but I think everyone on the board takes this very seriously. And look to have a couple of meetings on that coming up as soon as you have the information.
And you know, you might, you might also say too, if people are wondering, they can actually put a filter on their homes to get rid of trihalomethanes. It's a fairly easy stripping agent from a small residential, on the big systems, it's not near as easy.
Well, how about the pitcher?
Yeah, the pitcher, the, the, the one with the charcoal, the charcoal filter will strip trihalomethanes out. You got to keep your filters up, but to do it to the whole house, you'd have to put reverse osmosis or something like that to take care of it.
Marie, just, you commented, asked Paul about our water rate setting.
Yeah.
I just want to remind you that there was a bylaw change at our last town meeting that allows us to change the structure of the rates a little bit if we choose to, and I don't know how we want to incorporate that, but I'm more than willing to work with Paul.
Yeah, it's got to be part of the discussion, of course, yeah. But you're saying we'll be looking at March for those dates?
I would say sometime after March, we'll get the warrant out, you know, the budget, the warrant, and then right after that, we can jump into.
Yeah.
And into rates, so April, May, it doesn't really have to be done until the end of June, early July at the very latest. So we have plenty of time after that process.
I would like, you know, for transparency for us, we're the water commissioners, right? And so to actually state when we're going to discuss that, we'll call it a meeting of the commissioners before the select board. We'll sort of carve it out, so people will realize that we're really going to be discussing this issue.
One item before we close.
Yes.
I was, I don't know about Mark, I was pretty well taken back by how many people put in for the senior task force.
That's great.
Yeah.
And the quality of the people, and the background.
Yeah.
I had no idea that we were going to get, that the caliber and the interest is being shown towards this task force. Apparently, it is something by the senior community that really wants to get behind.
Yeah.
I'm going to be chatting with Mark, I don't know what we're going to do, because, you know, we've got highly qualified people that seem like they should be ad hoc, attached to this program. It's going to be a long, drawn-out program, but we didn't anticipate this.
Right.
Usually you're scraping, your soul to get three people to show up, and here we have, what, seven or nine people walking in that are all highly qualified.
Different strengths, different experiences.
Different strengths, yeah, but all intricate pieces to add to the puzzle.
That'll expand your group.
Yeah, well, it's going to take some thinking. We don't want to get it too big, because we channeled it on down. So it'd be like a good discussion with the town manager, and Mark and I, and get together and see what our recommendations are. But I sensed there's a, there's a problem coming up, because I'll tell you what, I don't know how we would select between that group. They're all good.
So that will be.
Maybe we bust with this problem all the time.
That's why a coin has heads and tails.
So that will be the meeting of February third, we'll do some more interviews. I was also thinking in February, we should do a goal setting. I mean, this is usually done in August, but maybe, you know, this isn't a bad time. We come up with all sorts of great ideas from the MMA, and Mark, you've got to find a new thing, now that the streetlights are so.
This used to be Stevens' worst time of the year.
See, you're going to have to decide how to handle this.
He hated us to go to the MMA, especially some of us.
No.
My track record is, is water meter, water meter remote readings.
That's done.
We're working.
Watch it, you're heading towards retirement this way.
She picks up brochures from everybody.
And also put your cards in, you win prizes.
Rosie is in full.
Be sure to ask Debbie for your cards. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
Can I just say one thing? This is about Westcom. I went to a Westcom meeting last week, and I don't know if you're aware of this, but the dispatchers at Westcom were the communications conduit between the state, okay, so you guys knew that? Okay, they also had helped a choking victim, a police officer, a chief police officer was actually choking, and the Westcom, through emergency, their emergency preparedness, had walked through the people to dislodge the choking. I think they also delivered a baby.
Wow.
I don't know if they are aware of the, what you were about to say, though, the abduction?
Yeah, the abduction, that they were the communications conduit.
Oh, you were, okay.
Right, for that girl who was.
Right, right. What the Westcom dispatchers were the communications conduit between the, the girl got abducted in Springfield, the people who were following her, and the state police, and all the other police, that they were, you know, having the communication go through and telling the police where everything was going on, and everything like that, so. And it was quite a lengthy process too, if it was four or five hours that they were in that process, so.
That is wonderful to hear these stories.
They've been busy. They also had that unfortunate drowning at the Chickapie River, the two boys, they coordinated that as well.
Wow.
It's been, they've been busy and.
Yeah.
And delivered a baby and saved a police officer?
Actually, it was a police officer, yeah, of all things.
That's amazing. So thank you for sharing that with us, yeah. We want to feel they're still part of our community, even though they're all the way over there. Or is there a motion to?
Yeah, it's already been moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you for joining us, and we'll be back February third. Thank you.